I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in all with liberty as a first.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath, present.
Commissioner Banky.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
At this time, I'm going to read a proclamation in observance of Hispanic Heritage Week. It will be be displayed on the first floor of City Hall. Um, there are already two flags there that are going to be flanking where the proclamation is going to be. They are already set up and this will be there as of this evening, right after this meeting. Whereas in September nineteen sixty-eight, Congress authorized Lyndon V. Johnson to proclaim Hispanic Heritage Week. And whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, the observance was expanded to a month-long event, which begins each year on September fifteenth, the anniversary of independence of five Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. And whereas Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September sixteenth and September eighteenth respectively. And whereas Hispanic Americans are a spirited culture with a growing influence in the arts, sciences, business, and government, and recognized in the Adrian community as well as the state for their leadership and participation. And whereas Hispanic people have long played an important role in the history of the city of Adrian, and have equally contributed to the strength of the nation as a whole. And whereas migrant farm workers are a crucial part of our local economy and their contributions to our community are recognized and valued. And whereas the Hispanic community contributions to the standard of life in the city of Adrian merit this occasion. And it is hoped that this celebration will instill unity, a sense of community pride, and togetherness in our citizens. Now, therefore, I, Angela Sword Heath, mayor of the city of Adrian, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth. For. As Hispanic Heritage Month and call upon all local businesses, clubs, and community members to effectively utilize Hispanic human resources and to work in partnership with the Hispanic community for the advantage it will bring to all involved. At this time, we will now have public comment regarding any items on the agenda. We will begin inside the city chambers first. Just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and place of residence. When we've exhausted all public comment for items on the agenda inside the chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants.
Jerick Tim, Adrian resident. I would like to speak on the strategic plan check-in, but how can I be expected to when I have no idea what is on the check-in? The idea that residents are supposed to comment before the discussion is ridiculous, especially when you have other items as listed items on the agenda, how can anyone speak on something that the subject isn't even listed? This is another example of the city eroding public trust. It's disingenuous to expect people to speak before even knowing what is being discussed specifically and calling it public input. Here's my public comment on the strategic plan anyways. If you're being honest, the update should be that we're failing miserably at implementing it. The bike lane network in the plan has had negative progress. At least five miles of bike lanes have been removed since this strategic plan was put in, most of which was part of the proposed bike lane network in the plan. The bike loop won't connect to the bike network in the plan, yet it is now set in stone, even though I was told there was time to fix it and then left hanging. The proposed development at Bixby doesn't follow the housing and density guidelines in the plan or even match what is supposed to be there in the updated zoning map, yet the planning commission hasn't set the developer back to the drawing board. The developer called their single-family home rentals missing middle housing. Missing middle housing is in our strategic plan. Missing middle housing can be many things such as townhouses, duplexes, or triplexes. One thing that it is definitely not is single-family homes, whether rented or owner-occupied. And not even our city administrator corrected them when they made this claim, which begs the question, does our city administrator or anyone on this commission or other city commissions even know what is in our strategic plan or what any of it means? What is the point of a strategic plan when every time I read a section of it, I see things that the city is actively doing that contradicts it? Thank you.
At this time, we will open up public comment to those on Zoom for items on the agenda. Hearing no public comment, we will now begin our work-study session, and I will turn it over. Oh, oh, okay, and I will turn it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. So our first item for the work session is continued discussion of the vacant buildings chapter of our city code or article of our city code. Uh, we had a couple of things to address from our last discussion, namely the interplay between this and the soon-to-be-effective point-of-sale inspection ordinance. So as I thought about it, I think in the prior draft, I was thinking about it in the opposite way. So rather than a completion of that certificate being compliance with this ordinance, the reverse really needs to be true because this is a much more comprehensive inspection, both inside and out, whereas the point-of-sale is an exterior-only inspection. So I made two edits, which I highlighted in yellow. Again, all the edits are still shown in red, but the two that are different from last time, other than some typos that I fixed, uh, are shown in the what is yellow highlighting if you have a color copy, otherwise it's just shaded. Uh, the one is in section ten four oh six, so that now says completion of the inspection and any required repairs under this section shall also be deemed compliance with the city's point-of-sale inspection program. So you would be able to get a certificate, uh, to sell the structure if you were compliant with the vacant buildings ordinance. And then the other place that disappears now is in ten four fifteen, which was the waiver of the registration fee. So I amended that last provision, which had talked about being actively marketed for sale or lease, to read as follows, provide satisfactory proof that the building was lawfully and consistently occupied no more than six months earlier, that the property is being marketed for sale or lease. And if the building is a residential dwelling, that it has a valid certificate of compliance as a resident, as a rental dwelling or under the point-of-sale inspection program. Uh, the idea there being that if it was previously occupied, then uh, there's a reason for the waiver, so you don't have buildings that have been vacant but are just now getting registered, uh, for whatever reason, getting a waiver of the registration fee. And then, uh, making clear that if it has those certificates as well, that it qualifies for that one-time fee waiver. So those were the only two changes, but uh, happy to hear your further thoughts on it or uh, if you feel like we're ready to proceed to first reading of the ordinance at your next meeting.
Is a fee waiver an inspection waiver? So that does that mean if it's through this, that means that um, the homeowner still needs to do the inspection? Or they get the inspection for free?
Yeah, the the inspection has not been conducted. I talked to staff at our uh, community development staff meeting last week about what our practice has been in this case, and it has been that we don't do the inspection, uh, if any of those criteria are met. Needless to say, don't charge the fee either.
Um, I have a question on ten four fourteen, right to appeal. So here we have a fee listed for it's going from a hundred, from fifty to a hundred and fifty dollars. Should that be included, uh, like the other?
Yeah, I missed that one. That should be just in the resolution. The exception would be the fines, which need to be in here, but that should have been set by resolution. So I'll fix that.
And then ten four oh eight, uh, paragraph three. I think we talked about this last time under occupied home. Did we want home there or?
Uh, Commissioner Roberts brought that up as well. Yeah, and she suggested property, you don't really occupy property as such, and I I felt like the term home is broader than house, right? The whole property is your home. Uh, and you, you know, you maintain the lawn and the and the landscape of that. That particular provision is applying to, you know, the sort of the upkeep of the landscaping. So I, I, I like it, but obviously it's your call if you don't think that's the right word.
Well, what if it's not a home? What if it's a business? Should it say occupied home or business?
Building?
Building?
Yeah, might be a home or structure, yes. I was always thinking of it in the context of residential property, but it could be a commercial property as well, that's right. Anything else?
If the uh, point-of-sale gets repealed, um, will this ordinance need to be updated?
Yeah, presumably, but I don't know how else we can do it, right? I think we have, you know, it will go into effect at the end of the year. And so, you know, it's going to be in effect for some portion of the time that this is in effect, so I think we have to do it this way. Any other comments or questions? All right, we're consistent with our theme for the evening, that was quick. Anybody not comfortable with first reading next time with those edits? All right, that's what we'll do. Well, so for our strategic plan check-in, and this is not to be confused with our comprehensive plan, of course, but our task right now at twelve to thirteen months after adoption is to have a session with staff to review this and identify new one-year tasks for the upcoming uh, year. And so I'm, I, I guess dates when you would like to do that process? Do we just want to have everybody uh, show up at the Stubnet Center again like we did last time and uh, have all the department heads there? And of so, uh, what would your uh, inclination be as to when you would like to do that time of day? General range of dates, so on?
And do we plan to have it facilitated or not?
I, I'm open to your thoughts on that, but I, you know, and I think Lou would come back if we wanted, but I don't know. You know, we kind of got a structure now, I don't know if we need to do that necessarily. I think we know what he did last time too, and we can go through the same sort of process ourselves, but he wasn't expensive or anything, so I'm happy to invite him back if you think it would be beneficial.
I think the last time you gave us a lot of lead time to make it work in our schedule as best we could, so I think that's one thing we need to do. Right with the bat is when we start to talk about dates, need to give people some lead time. We had, the last time we did it, it was wonderful, we had everybody there, all the department heads were there, it was uh, worked out really well, so, but we had a good lead time the last time too, so.
How much time do you think you want? Month?
Yeah, or more.
Month? Everybody think a month? Not now? Okay. Before you go deer hunting? So.
How about November second? Second.
November second as a target?
Halloween weekend. Yeah, perfect time to leave. We can come and cast. Come and cast to me.
What time of day did you say? Is that a Saturday?
Yes.
I'm not looking at my calendar.
Ten to two.
Ten to two? Yeah, I would think. We're having the department ads there. Last time we did it, as you recall, we were by ourselves and then the department ads came. So I don't know that we need to do that whole thing, I guess. Just meeting collaboratively on what we got. What the revisions want to be.
Yeah, do you remember how much time it was last time? That we set aside?
Uh, it was the whole day, yeah. We started relatively at eight.
Yeah.
I think it was eight to one.
So do I, I think it was two. And so I don't know if we need that much time, as much time as that, I'm not saying cut it shorter, but I don't think we need that much time since it's already there. That's kind of what I was thinking, nine to twelve, like three hours.
Nine to twelve?
With lunch.
Well, we got that figured out unless there's department ads that can't make it, but. Yes. Yep, it's open to the public, so it'll be.
And stubbornness again, because I liked it.
Available, yeah, that was a nice thought, I thought it worked well.
I agree.
All right, we'll see if we can get that set up. Uh, happy to talk about anything else that's on there, but that's what I wanted to address tonight. Anyone else? Nope, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you. Plus, uh, I guess I should ask, are there other items for work session that anybody? Okay.
May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So move. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz? Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to the regular agenda, resolution R twenty-four dashes zero forty-two is from administration. It is a request to purchase Black Hill Spruce Trees for the Comstock Christmas Riverwalk. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So move.
Support.
At this time, are there any commissioner comments or discussion on this?
So a bid's not required for this?
I, well, we're asking you to waive the bid. This is where we bought, where our organizer has always acquired them. I mean, it's an in-and-out. We sell them for obviously more than we pay for them. We had an incident a few years back where we had to send back all the trees that we had ordered, and this uh, grower came in at the last minute and provided quality trees, and so we've just gone with them ever since for that reason. Next year, you could have a new process, but uh, I think uh, representations were probably made to this grower as to our needs for this year already, not by me.
Just my concern that wasn't listed as a waiver of the no-bid, I thought it was.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the
In the action.
It is. It's in the resolution.
Okay, I stand corrected.
Can you explain why we just, I, I know the answer, but I just like the public to know the answer. Can you explain why we do um, sell them for a greater cost than we are purchasing them for?
Yeah, the event altogether, you know, is quite expensive. There's much that goes into it, both in terms of things we have to have contractors do, like setting up the giant tree and, and string lights and um, um, the stage and the sound for the event and all those things. Uh, it's not a money-making event, but a part of what goes to cover all those costs is the price of the trees, which is still cheaper than you can buy them on the tree lot, I think.
Thank you. I think I did the math and the tree was about forty dollars per tree, something.
Thirty-eight, but I wasn't trying to advertise.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I looked at the math, just wanted to know what it was.
Sorry, we have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Commissioners, there are miscellaneous reports in your packet, are there any questions or comments on those? We will move on to public comment, this is general public comment. We will start inside the city chambers first. Just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit, which you will see on the screen, and please state your name and place of residence. When we have exhausted all comment within the city chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants, and they will have the same parameters of the time and stating their name and place of residence.
Harry Collins, Scott Corden, grin. I mentioned this one before, but it was even to a larger extent, I think, tonight. I didn't understand half of what you people said tonight, couldn't hear it. You look down this way to talk to another commissioner. We can't hear a thing out here that you're saying. And some people stand back here, talking to the mic, we can't hear it. Uh, if you got the mics, people use them. Some of the people, and I'm not sure I'm speaking for everybody, but you see all the heads nodding. We can't hear what's going on. I have, I have probably twenty percent of what you said in the, in your uh, work-study session, and throw the rest, couldn't hear it.
Jerry Tim, Adrian resident. Like to amend my previous statement, we'll file what I was talking about into other items. I think that's fair. Um, Springbrook Avenue is still a mess. It took all of three days before I started regularly witnessing people driving thirty-plus miles per hour in the thirty or in the fifteen mile-per-hour zone while walking my son to school. On top of the other dangerous behaviors that that street design not only invites, but incentivizes. Uh, a week ago, I was made aware that a deer was hit on Springbrook Avenue and left dead on the sidewalk. A deer is larger than most APS students. If someone is driving so quickly and so distracted that they cannot only hit but kill a deer and toss it ten feet onto the sidewalk, what would that do to a child? The next morning, I decided to walk up and down Springbrook Avenue after dropping my son off to see if I could find exactly where the deer was hit. It didn't take me long, as the deer was hit right in front of the school in the old bus drop-off area, right near where the student was hit a few years back. You can't enforce your way out of this, this is a design issue that needs to be fixed before another student is a victim of this negligent street design. Um, I have a photo of the aftermath, if any of you guys want to see it. Thanks.
Aaron Cheshire, city of Adrian resident. Um, in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, uh, we wanted to provide a handout that has information about a statewide initiative uh, that would greatly benefit the Hispanic population in our city and throughout Michigan, if that's okay, if we can hand out something. Um, Ben and I have been working with the Dominican Sisters and will be hosting a presentation at the Weber Center in the near future, which will be emailed uh, out to everybody. We are seeking as much support as possible, and if you would look into this information and attend our presentation, you'd be doing a great service uh, to the Hispanic community as a whole. Thanks a lot.
Uh, Don Taylor, resident of Adrian, twenty-seven years now, probably. I would agree with Commissioner Collins, but it would be even more helpful if some of you would turn your microphones on, which I don't think some of you did during the commentary, so. Always remember that, so. I know I shouldn't say this, but the weather looks really good for this weekend. So I'm going to, I'm going to ask all of you to come downtown, I, I know Mary will be there by her Christmas presents, Mary will be there, I know many of you come down, so seventeenth annual are delicious, it should be fun. Uh, and don't forget at one-thirty Saturday, the first annual Kiwanis Duck Race down at Comstock Park. And I'm sure I bought the winning ticket, but maybe you did, Commissioner. So we'll see you this weekend. Oh, you did. Okay.
So did I.
See you this weekend.
Mr. Taylor, please don't leave, I'd like to chat with you after the meeting, real quick.
At this time, we will now open up the public comment to the Zoom participants. Hearing no public comment, are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Roberts?
So the academy is in its third week, and this week, uh, we will have the county and city clerks, and they'll be discussing what their jobs are and also the upcoming election, so that should be exciting. Along with Michelle Dewey, we'll be doing a presentation on our website and how to contact uh, city services, so um, I'm really looking forward to this Wednesday's meeting. Like to thank Commissioner Schwartz for taking over last week when I couldn't be there. Also, I very recently read, as we're discussing the Christmas trees down at Comstock, um, that this is Mr. Berryman's last year of organizing it. So we need to make sure that we, as a body, either make, have a plan, or there is someone else that's going to be taking over as a plan for this, because that is a truly, truly special event for our community.
Just a, I have a request from uh, Mission Elementary, uh, some of you may know they have a fluency friends program. So it's um, probably one of the most rewarding volunteer opportunities you can take, where you sit uh, on a weekly basis with a uh, student, uh, they read to you, not you reading to them. And you help uh, encourage them and build their um, their fluency and cadence and um, uh, skills related with literacy. Um, I know Matt and I did it last year, and um, it's a quick, easy opportunity. Uh, Kathy, the reading specialist, works around your schedule. Uh, it's about half hour once a week, and if you have to go somewhere, that's fine, uh, they'll work around your schedule. Um, so I have a sign-up sheet here I can uh, share with you if you're interested.
I would just like to um, thank everyone that contributed and helped um, to really make our sister city, Moriyama Japan, feel very um, welcomed into our community. There were many businesses and many different entities that just went above and beyond to accommodate our group, and it was just, um, we are just very thankful for that, they were very thankful for that, they have been talking to me um, almost a couple of times a day since they left and just going on and on about what a great trip that this was and that they just could not believe um, that the people of Adrian, you know, were so welcoming and just so gracious and. um, that the people of Adrian, you know, were so welcoming and just so gracious, and they just really had a great time. And, you know, that, that is a very important relationship for our, our city to have, and it's something very special. So um, we're just thank you um, for me, but from all of us for um, for all of those groups that did go above and beyond to help, but especially to our home visit families. Um, Cynthia Kojima, Terry and Carolyn Marr, and Jim and Sue Berryman. Um, that's a big undertaking when you're bringing in somebody into your home that doesn't speak English or very, very little English, and they're staying in your home for many days. And they are just the most gracious hosts and just did so many wonderful things with them and just formed really great relationships and bonds with them. And that just speaks volumes of our community, just with those representatives that were um, hosting. So thank you very much. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say hi.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.